Let us call this meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could say standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, moving right along to item number four is Proclamations: Recognition of Veterans Day. I believe it was discussed between myself and Counselor Nuccio that we would like to give the honor to Counselor Luba to read the proclamation as he is the only standing veteran on our council. So whenever you already do, I believe Town Manager Rosen is sharing his screen if you'd like to read the proclamation into the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. I truly appreciate this. It's an honor and privilege to be able to do this. So, the proclamation regarding Veterans Day. Whereas, on November 11, Americans commemorate the service sacrificed, the measurable contributions of our nation's veterans who have proudly worn our country's uniform to defend and preserve our precious liberty. We pause to recognize the brave men and women who have fearlessly and faithfully worked to defend the United States and our freedom. And, whereas, our residents of the town of Tallinn have answered a high calling to serve, have helped secure America every turn, fighting in every major military operation, getting back to the foundation of our great country. From plains and forests of the 13 colonies in our infant nation, the fields of war-torn Europe, to the jungles of Southeast Asia, to the deserts of Iraq and the mountains of Afghanistan. And, whereas, our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of the freedoms which we all continue to enjoy, and recognize their sacrifice in defense of our great nation, will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy that have served as the foundation of this great country. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And, whereas, on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women who in defense of our freedom have bravely worn the uniform of the United States, serving as members of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard. These brave patriots have protected our nation's ideals, stood tall in the face of grave danger, and enabled our nation to become the greatest force for freedom in human history. Their devotion and duty to patriotism deserves the respect and admiration of our grateful nation each and every day. Therefore, we now recognize all residents of the town of Tallinn, past and present, who have worn the uniform and served our nation as part of the armed forces of the United States of America. We are forever thankful, the many heroes among us who have bravely fought around the world to protect us all. Your valor, loyalty, dedication, and selfless sacrifices continue to inspire us today as we work to advance peace and extend freedom locally and around the world. Date at Tallinn, Connecticut, this 10th day of November 2020. Signed, Tanny Nuccio, Chair, Tallinn Town Council. Thanks very much, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Counselor Luba, and thank you for your service to our nation. Moving right along to item number five, we do not have any public petitions communications. Actually, we do, we don't have any public petitions, communication, public participation. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand with the little yellow or little blue hand. Otherwise, if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine. And do not forget, when you are speaking, please introduce yourself with your full legal name as well as your address.
Excuse me, Mr. Jones, for the interruption. I don't see that we are recording this meeting.
It might be Nick Levine is recording. I did notice that the red dot wasn't open. If Town Manager Rosen would clarify.
Yeah, that's correct. Hi, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Nick Levine is representative from CBC, so we should be broadcasting live right now, and this will be uploaded to Twitter. I don't know if Mr. Levine can just let us know that he's recording? I'm going to put the TV on in a sec. Hold on, I'll be right back. All right, thank you for waiting for me. We're live on channel 1090 right now, so if anybody's interested, we're recording.
Okay, great. So we are able to proceed. So again, if you would like to speak on any items, any subject within the jurisdiction of the town, you can either raise your little blue hand, or if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine. All right, it doesn't look like I'm seeing any unless I'm missing any blue hands. I don't see any, so moving right along to item six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, A, reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Don't believe I see Katie Murray for the Birch Grove Building Committee, but I don't know if Counselor Felusi, if you have any reports for boards that are responsible to the town council? Actually, it looks like Brenda was kicked off momentarily, so I'm bringing her back into the meeting. Now I'll just wait for her to get reconnected.
Yes, I am. Sorry, we lost internet at my house. Luckily, we have a couple different options.
Okay, hopefully you heard. If not, we just went to seven A, reports of the boards and committees responsible to the council. I didn't see Katie Murray on, so I wasn't sure if you had any boards or committees that you would like to report forward to the council?
Sure. Thank you. Brenda Felusi. Blake Committee did not meet, land acquisition did not meet. Talent Tourism will be meeting next week. We continue to update the Facebook page. Am I doing planning and zoning now too? I'm sorry?
No, no, it's fine. If that's it for just committees that are responsible to the council, we can move to item seven B, which would then be items such as planning and zoning.
All right, so for planning and zoning, they had a meeting last night. They're still working on some old business, which is a site plan for the construction of a commercial building that is on Kingsbury Avenue. They took a, one action under new business was, which is to allow our interim planning director, Brian Miller, they granted him zoning enforcement authority. So that gives one more person in the town authority, which helps us respond more quickly if needed. And that was it.
All right, I'll just look through my camera screen. I'll let John go next, if you have any boards or commissions that met.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Counselor Schener? If you have any meetings that were held?
Thank you. Yeah, so we had an agricultural meeting earlier this month. We weren't able to make this, or for you to the minutes. And I did attend the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting last night. Very quick meeting, it was just a kind of a recap of what they've been doing over the last month. And maybe Mike, if you can give Bruce a hand, kind of figure out his Zoom situation. I don't know, he's a little concerned with something about recording. I don't know, he'll, if he needs your help, I'm sure he'll talk to you, but that was the, the main thing about the meeting is going forward Zoom meetings for colder weather. So that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, Counselor Luba?
Thank you. That, with regard to the Birch Grove Building Committee, that we did have a special session meeting to address one change order that needed to be acted upon, that it was, that that change order was passed, that we have our regularly scheduled meeting scheduled for tomorrow, I believe, and that, that that's all.
All right, thank you. And Counselor Forsythe?
Yeah, just reporting Permanent Celebration Committee. They met on the 5th. So they just went over the scarecrow contest. They went over the winners, the business category. Winner was Johnson Autobody, then Camille's, then Banner Water, then organization. Tallinn Girl Scouts was first, then the Tallinn Democratic Committee, the second, and Tallinn Garden Paths was third. And next year, they're proposing just two categories of business and community instead of organization, community instead, and they'll do it by voting as well. They chose Tallinn Cooperative Daycare as most creative entry. That was the one with those crayons. I thought it was really cute. Anyway, so they set, they are going to get a free lunch for the staff. Then they talked about the Hollin, the holiday tree lighting, excuse me, on December 5th, which is my second 40th birthday. I mentioned that. So that is, they're going to have the holiday tree lighting on December 5th at 4:30, but it can't be a public event because of the restrictions that we have right now. So they're, the Health District is going to review a revised holiday tree lighting plan with COVID-19 guidelines. And they're creating a town-wide contest for Birch Grove and intermediate students to write letters to Santa asking to light the tree on the green. And the committee is going to choose one child to light the tree, and that child and their family will be invited to come to the green along with Mr. and Mrs. Claus. It'll help to keep the number of attendees low, and would be a local videographer to film the event and post it on the Facebook page. And they'll have a choral director, so they can have some music as well, but keeping it small. And they're also talking about a holiday, town-wide holiday decoration contest where residents can submit their holiday decorations, like, you know, their house is decorated. And collection for the food pantry will be done at select locations around town. So the PCC is working on making some special things happen for the holidays, so that sounds very nice. Yeah, they're doing some good stuff. So that's all from PCC. Thank you.
All right, and then I'll wrap it up. I did not attend, but the Conservation Commission had a site walk for the design implementation subcommittee, and they have a meeting on Thursday. So otherwise, nothing to report. So we will move on to new business. Item 8.1, consideration of a resolution establishing a building committee for the Birch Grove Primary School Code Violation Unsuitable Soils Project, authorizing grant applications for the project, and waiving competitive bidding requirements for the project. And I'll pass it over to Town Manager Rosen to give additional summary. I do want to recognize, it looks like Bev Bellaty, who is a part of the proposed subcommittee, is on as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Hi, everybody. Mike Rosen, Town Manager. This is an item that is quite interesting because at its surface, it looks like, you know, we're creating a new building committee, but we need to, you know, maybe delve a little bit deeper about what this specifically is asking for. So if everybody remembers a few months ago, which obviously feels like years ago, but we had the unsuitable soil issue at the Birch Grove School where it was deemed that the soil that was currently there from the, from the prior school, there were certain areas that were, the new school was going to cover the footprint that were not used as part of the old school's footprint. So the soil that was there was deemed unsuitable to support the weight of the new school. So ultimately, what had happened was that soil was trucked out, and new soil that could support the weight of the school was trucked in. And that's how the problem was solved. The reason that, you know, this is on our agenda is because, if you all remember, the cost of that was somewhere in the ballpark of about $1.8 million. And we had pursued special state legislation to provide 100% financing of that cost. And there was some mechanics behind that. We don't have to get into that here, but where a certain portion of the project was temporarily delayed so that we could pay the $1.8 million upfront, with the idea that we would be reimbursed on the back end if state legislation passed through, as it has subsequently done that last month or two. So the reason this is on the agenda tonight is because when we're working with the Office of School Construction Grants, OSCGR, they require that a resolution be approved by the local legislative body that embeds into it a building committee, in this case, the building committee that we're proposing tonight, specifically to have to do with the code violation. And the resolution covers the setting up of that committee, entering into the grant and filing the application for the money, the paperwork for the money, and also approving the schematics, drawings, bills, and invoices of the project. Now, the interesting thing here is that this project's already been done. The soil was trucked out, the new soil was trucked in. In fact, if anyone's taken a site walk recently, the school is well on its way towards being built. So, and ahead of schedule, I should add. So what, one other aspect of this resolution tonight is that we are also asking that competitive bidding be waived because the project's already been finished. And those are the four corners of what this resolution basically boils down to. Also, to note that the building committee, similar to what has been done in the past for roof replacement projects on schools, is comprised of just three staff people. In this case, Peter Setaba from the school, Scott Lappin, Public Works Director, and Bev Bellaty from Human Services, who is also our liaison to the, the larger Birch Grove Building Committee for the, for the overall school construction. And we're recommending that council appoint those three members to this special building committee, which, by the way, should only need between two and three meetings to meet and fully complete its tasks. Because in a sense, in a formality way, they're opening the books of the project, they're reviewing it, and they're closing the books of the project. So it's kind of a formality that we are doing this, but we're doing it to comply with state, I guess, guidance or necessary to get the money. And obviously, like I said, it's in line with other building projects we've done of this nature. And in fact, this exact lineup of, of building committee is what we've had in the past, and Bev can correct me if I'm wrong, but Pete, Scott, and Bev have done this before a few times now. And, and there's a, in your packets tonight, there's a relatively long resolution that covers all the nooks and crannies of this, but if you do look on page eight of your packet, is sort of a truncated resolution that staff is asking council to approve tonight. Thank you.
All right, Steve Jones, thank you. Mike, are there any questions from counselors? All right, Counselor Luba, it looks like your hand is raised first, so go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jones. That, just, just for edification purposes, that I was part of the discussions at the Birch Grove Building Committee when we brought this issue up. It was fully fleshed out by the building committee. Ms. Bellaty was there as well, as well as the other people that were, that we were looking to nominate to this, to this committee. And that it's something that we need by, by statutory and, and regulation requirements. Something that the board was in favor of, and that I think that, that I would give my support and feel that we should pass this without issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. Counselor Felusi, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Steve. Brenda Felusi, I just want to make sure that when we say people have to attend quarterly meetings in person, that Zoom is acceptable. I'm assuming that the governor's rules have covered that for events like this. I'm sure that we had just used language that was available. But it said somewhere in there that, you know, quarterly meetings needed to be attended in person by members of the committee. I'm assuming it's going to be acceptable that we just have one person show up at a Zoom meeting, if that's what we're still doing. Correct?
That seems like a good point, Brenda. I'm just looking, can you point me to where? I'm just looking in the resolution for that language.
Section, section four, possibly? Sorry?
No, no, thank you. Thank you.
Should be on page five.
Yeah, to provide quarterly reports in person to the town council on the status of the project, time, schedule, and financing.
Oh, yeah, very good. I, I don't think this will last a quarter, to be honest. This should be done in like a month, so, but yeah.
I assume so, but I don't want to get this nullified under some little, we didn't dot the i there. So I just want to make sure that it's acceptable. If we need to have them come in, it's acceptable to have it on a Zoom meeting, and we only need one member instead of all three.
Sure, executive orders would supersede this anyway, so correct. We would, we would allow it via Zoom. Yep.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, and I thought I saw Counselor Luba's hand up, but did you lower it? Okay, all right, sounds good. In that case, is there, if there is no other discussion? Normally, I would be the one making the resolution motion, however, due to Jerome Nuccio's absence tonight, I'll need someone else to read the draft resolution, make that motion on page eight.
Mr. Jones, I would like to have an opportunity to pull that up. I will, I'll see about reading it in.
It's on page eight, Lou.
All right, thank you. All right, then. Councilman Jones, I would make the, I would propose this resolution. It's a consideration of a resolution establishing a building committee for the Birch Grove Primary School Code Violation Unsuitable Soils Project, authorizing grant applications for the project, and waiving competitive bidding requirements for the project. Be resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the Tallinn Board of Education through their superintendent to apply to the Connecticut Commission of Administrative Services or other state or federal agencies, and to accept or reject grants for the Birch Grove Primary School Code Violation Project, the project. Two, that the town council hereby authorizes the preparation of schematic drawings, outline specifications, preliminary studies, as well as architect, engineer, construction, and other consulting studies, and reports for the project. Three, that the town council hereby establishes a building committee for the project, the building committee, which committee shall consist of three full members. Committee members will be comprised of Town of Tallinn and Town, Tallinn Board of Education employees. At least one member shall be a resident of the Town of Tallinn, the town. Four, that the building committee shall approve any contracts, schematics, and specifications with architects, engineers, contractors, and others for the project. Five, that the building committee members shall not receive any compensation for their services. Necessary expenses of the building committee shall be included in the cost of the project. The records of the building committee shall be filed with the town clerk and opened a public inspection during normal business hours. Upon completion of the project, the building committee shall present a full and complete report in account to the town council and the town. Six, that the building committee shall be vested with the following powers and duties. One, to approve a design which considers all methods of construction, which is consistent with the Board of Education approved educational specifications. Two, to approve the design of the project consistent with the scope of the project. Three, to select the officers of the building committee. Four, to provide quarterly reports in person to the town council on the status of the project timelines, schedule, and financing. Five, to review and comment on plans for addressing temporary space needs. Six, to review and comment on space needs of the project as shown in architectural drawings, taking into account the educational requirements, building code requirements, ADA requirements, safety requirements, and space needs. Seven, to review and comment on the budget for the project. Eight, to review the change orders for the project. Nine, to monitor the project's schedule. Ten, to hold and establish agendas for its meetings and take meeting minutes, and file such minutes with the town clerk on a timely basis. And eleven, to comply with all laws and regulations relating to all aspects of the project, including, without limitation, the nonadvocacy provisions set forth in section 9-369B of the Connecticut General Statute. Be further resolved that the town council hereby waives the competitive building requirements, excuse me, waives competitive bidding requirements set forth in towns, in the town's current purchasing policy, and any similar requirements of the Board of Education in connection with school construction projects with respect to the project, finding that such waiver is in the best interest of the town. Be further resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individuals to the building committee: Peter Staba, Scott Lappin, Beverly Bellaty.
All right, thank you, Counselor Luba. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that. John Regan.
All right, John Regan, seconds. All right, all those in favor, I will call out names. Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor York?
Aye.
Counselor Schener?
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye.
And Counselor Felusi?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so that is unanimous. Town Manager Rosen, so that is all set. I believe we can now move on to item eight.
Excellent, thank you. 8.2. A, appointments to the Board of Education. We have in your packets, and I am just flipping to it, sorry. On page 11, or, I'm sorry, page 10 of 31 on tonight's packet, are your appointments to consider. We did have two resignations from the Board of Education two Wednesdays ago, and the, the party chair of that party has recommended the two replacements, Sophia Sheikh and Madhu Rendu-Chintala, to take over for the vacated positions left by Karen Moran and Kate Howard-Bender. So tonight, we're looking to appoint Sophia and Madhu to fill those vacancies. And there's, the letters are in your packet. Let me just make sure I get this right about which person is filling which position, unless somebody has that handy. I think it's in Katie's letter here. So Sophia is filling Karen's vacancy, and Madhu is filling Kate's vacancy. Thank you.
All right, is there a, any discussion before we make a motion? I'll just say, just first, if there's any additional discussion, just want to thank Karen and Kate for their years of service to the Board of Education. You know, sad to see you go, but I'm glad that we were able to very quickly find new residents that are eager and engaged to be involved in the Board of Education, so that would be my only comment. If there are no others, I'd entertain.
I just also want to echo your words. You know, Karen Moran has been a pillar of our community, from PTOs to a member of the Board of Ed for many years. Her expertise in historical knowledge is going to be missed. And Kate Howard-Bender, with her background as an administrator, is also going to be missed on the Board of Education. You know, again, you know, missing the knowledge, and I'm very excited to see that we do have two dedicated members of the community stepping up to fill their shoes. And I look forward to hearing what they accomplish on the Board of Ed. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? All right, if not, I would look for a motion to appoint Sophia Sheikh and Madhu Rendu-Chintala to the Board of Education.
This is so moved.
All right, it looks like Lou first and Brenda seconded. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion. I'll signify a vote, roll call vote. John Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Forsythe?
Aye.
Counselor Schener?
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye.
Counselor Felusi?
Aye.
And Steve Jones, I am also an aye, so that passes unanimously. It does look like we do have two other appointments. There was a late one sent by the Town Manager's Office for a reappointment to the Historic District Commission for a term of 11/12/2020 to 11/12/2025 for Timothy Malone. So I would accept a motion to approve that reappointment to the Historic District Commission if there is one.
This is Brenda Felusi, so moved.
Lou will all second.
All right, any discussion?
Thank you for your service, continued service.
Thank you, Counselor Felusi. Seeing no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Forsythe?
Aye.
Counselor Schener?
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye.
And Counselor Felusi?
Aye.
And just one other final thing. I do want to thank Todd Longo for his, I believe, three to four years of service on the Economic Development Commission. We did receive his resignation letter, so there is now a vacancy on those boards, as well as, I believe, two other boards or commissions that will need to be updated once Madhu Rendu-Chintala is officially sworn in, since I believe he was on Board of Education. once Madhu Rendu Chintala is officially sworn in, since I believe he was on Board of Assessment Appeals and I think Blight, I forget what the secondary.
Nonprofit housing, I believe.
Yeah, right, the nonprofit housing corps. So for anyone out in the audience looking to serve on a board or commission, there are two more openings there, as well as others that are plenty out there, at least twenty of those. So moving right along to item eight point two B, the Eastern Highland Health District, let's see if I pull that up. Board of Directors, a councillor, council member needs to be appointed for a term of eleven, fourteen, twenty twenty to eleven, fourteen, twenty twenty-three. I believe in the conversations that have been had, I believe Chairman Nuccio is the current council member, and they intended to continue in that position for the time being. So if there is no discussion on that, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Chairman Nuccio to the Eastern Highland Health District's Board of Directors for a term of eleven, fourteen, twenty twenty to eleven, fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
This is John Regan, so moved. I'll second.
All right, if there is no other discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Councillor Regan.
Aye.
Councillor Forsythe.
Yep, aye, sorry.
No worries. Councillor Schenner.
Aye.
Councillor Luba.
Aye.
Councillor Felusi.
Aye.
And Steve Jones, I am also an aye, so that passes unanimously. Item nine, old business. I don't believe we have any on the record, so we'll move right over to ten. Report of the town manager.
Hi, everybody. Mike Rosen, town manager. So I just have a couple of things for us tonight to talk about. My, you know, sort of what's going on in my office and such. So we, we're still plugging along at the capital budget process. The goal is to get you the memo at your first December meeting. So we're working on trying to model out the debt and look at what we can afford and what's, what can be delayed and all the fun stuff that I get to do. So I will, you know, have that to you in about a month's time. And a bit of bitter, well, I would say a bit of bad news here. Our planning director searched that we were, we were in the midst of having a finalist candidate. Unfortunately withdrew from the process and we had an executive session scheduled for later in this meeting, but we no longer need to have that executive session. So we're going to go back out to search for a planning director for our town. Meanwhile, the interim planner, Brian Miller, will continue to stay on with us. I've spoken to him about it, and he can continue to serve us. So that's, that's the good news on that. So I just wanted to also, it hasn't come up yet tonight, but I wanted to just express my thanks to everyone who was involved with the election last, last week. That's the registrars of voters, all the volunteers, the town clerk, the town clerk's office, the temporary help the town clerk had, which did, everyone did a fantastic job. I'm sure you, you all will echo my sentiments when we say that they did yeoman's work last week and there was a lot sort of put on their plate and they did a great job. And also want to extend that thanks to public safety, to the troopers, everyone who was involved with traffic control and make sure that, and also to the residents. Thank you for cooperating and wearing your masks and not making, not making it tough on us. And I, I, I don't have the final numbers. I, I, I think we had extremely good and turnout. You know, we had an unprecedented turnout. It's, I, I did speak with the town clerk earlier. We actually had more in-person voters at the last election than we did at this one, but it's also because we had all the mail-in ballots that were, you know, so altogether, when you add those together, we had an unprecedented turnout. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff as well as the volunteers who made this possible. So just wanted to mention that. Another bit of good news, our steep grant application, which we had brought to council a few months ago, was accepted and we're going to be funded at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars to do, excuse me, to do the recreation center improvements, which include front, front entranceway handicap accessible doors that are going to have the button that you press and the door swings open. Also, the gym floor reconstruction and the storage room for that, that's currently used. It's vacant at the moment, but it's going to be used for temperature controlled and climate controlled PPE storage from the Public Safety Department. So we're just signing the paperwork now. We just got notified yesterday that we were awarded, I think ninety or so other towns were awarded, but you know what? We, we, we put a lot of effort into that application. We had an internal team that put it together, as I've said a couple of times now. When it comes to grants and grant writing and also grant administration, we have a small but very close-knit ragtag team that works on that. And you all know who you are. I see a few of you in the audience right now. And I just want to thank you for your help, you know, Bev, Mike, everybody else, yeah, planning department. So what else? Veterans Day is tomorrow. Town Hall is closed for Veterans Day. The, I just want to mention also that I will be on a scheduled staycation next week. So if you need me, I'll be around, but you know, I won't be checking my phone as often as I usually do. And then just the last thing I want to mention that, as many of you know, and I've sent out an e-blast and also an alert to the councillors. In terms of COVID, Talon is one of sixty-eight communities that are now on the red alert status. We, the previous week, we were in orange alert. And that's, there's a mathematical equation that tells you what level you're at, whether you're yellow, orange, or red. And in the first time they did this, we were just orange by about one case. We, we had one case over what yellow would have been. And now we're about a few cases over what orange would be to be in red. So not to scare everybody, but this is just, this is what the trending, trending is across the nation. I mean, there's no, really no new information here that you haven't already heard a million other times, but just when, you know, be vigilant, take this seriously, social distance, wear your mask, and make sure you wash your hands frequently and try not to touch your face. I mean, again, this is stuff that we've heard many, many, many times over, but you know, there's no, there, there's no way, you just have to kind of be, take this seriously and be vigilant about it. And when you're out there, you know, obviously if you're supermarkets and restaurants, it, it's, it's, you're doing, you know, you have to do what you have to do. You have to go to the supermarket, you have to get groceries, you have to get food and, and possibly do other errands. So just, we, we're managing it, we're keeping our eye on it. The numbers will refresh on Thursday to, to look at, it's a two-week look back period. So hopefully, if our numbers have trended better this week, we may fall below the red alert back to orange or yellow. They do look at two weeks' worth of data, though, and our second week, which was last week, was relatively high. We had over twenty cases. So we need a couple of good weeks in a row to get us back down to yellow or orange. So I'm just asking, you know, to everybody to please, again, take this seriously. And we do put information out. We did have a flu clinic last week on Thursday and Fri- I'm sorry, not flu clinic, a drive-up testing for COVID Thursday and Friday last week. I know we had a good turnout for that. So, you know, get tested. I've been tested several times now just to, you know, it's, it's not that scary. It's not that invasive. They, they go into your nose, but it's not too bad. So there's plenty of opportunities for, you know, free clinics out there. And that's all I had, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, and yes, thank you to Talon Cert forty as well as the Talon Public Fire Department and Public Safety for their coordination. Are there any questions? It looks like, okay, councillor Felusi, your hand is raised.
Yes, hi, Brenda Felusi. I had a request from a few residents. When they're reading the town manager's report, sometimes they see something and it makes them want to contact the department that has the information in it. And I believe that this is probably a form that you're plugging information into. Is there a way to create, to add contact information? Like human services put their, their phone number or their email address there? Many people are looking at the manager's report on a device which, you know, one click would open up their email or one click would send a phone call. And it might be a little bit easier for people to be able to reach the departments if we added that to the manager's report.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, for all the, all the various departments who submit reports, that we just put a phone number? So it's a, for example, building department, and then it would have the phone number underneath and so on. Okay. I think we could do that. I can, I can certainly, you know, we'll go through the directory and do that. Sure.
Yeah, I think that just makes it a little, a little bit more user-friendly. I mean, some of them you might not put anything up there, like obvious the fire department, you might not put a phone number there. I don't know. Maybe if they're talking about ordering the numbers or something like that. But, you know, thank you again, as always, for putting these together. There's lots of information in there every month. Let me see if there was something else. You already gave us an update on the planner position that's open. What about any other open roles? What about like Fran's position for the senior center? Was there any, is there any plans on that yet?
So we don't have a final offer that has been accepted yet. So at the, at the answer is, we've, we've gone through the interview process. We've selected a couple of people that we, we had final interviews with. The Human Service Director, the Director of Administrative Services, and I, we have somebody in mind. We're just negotiating at the moment. So that, that I believe will be filled probably within the month or so. We're just waiting on to figure out the logistics of that and the, the transition time and stuff like that. The other position I believe that we're recruiting for is in the library system. And I know we had a very large turnout, I think over a hundred applications for that. Again, it's the Mr. Wilkinson and Barbara Pettijohn are going to, you know, look through all those, see who's qualified. It's a large candidate pool for that, that role. So, you know, good luck, Mike. But we will do interviews for, for that position as well. And I know we, I don't know if, Mike, you might be on the phone there, but we did just extend an offer to our new public safety officer position. That was our seventh firefighter, the one that's going to be coming on in the new, the new calendar year, January first. So that's good news. This, I believe it's the first time the fire department's ever had seven officers. So that's, thanks to the council for funding that in last year's budget cycle. And I think that's all the, the positions we have.
Great. Thank you so much for that update. Appreciate it.
Sure. See councillor Luba, your hand is raised.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Jones. Just questions to Mr. Rosen. First, where did you go for your COVID test? Because the three that I've had, I feel like they were touching the back of my brain, but it was all worthwhile.
And. Well, I, I shouldn't, I shouldn't single out any vendor because we have to be fair, but.
And secondly, I just want to say thank you to you and all of your staff. Since I know that you're going to be going on your staycation, that you all did an outstanding job with the election and everything else. So thank you very much. And it's a well-deserved break for you. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions for the town manager? If there are none, we'll move over to chairperson's report. Actually, sorry. Number eleven of the minutes, eleven point one, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, remote regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Vice Chair, I just, I just want to note, there was a correction. The town clerk notified me. If you would look at, in your packets, it's on page twenty-three of thirty-one. I guess I misspoke and I want to make sure the record reflects the accurate information. In, in page twenty-three of thirty-one, the second paragraph that starts, Mr. Rosen noted that the reason for the public hearing is because they are creating an ordinance, semicolon, in effect it is a policy. So the, I looked into this and it's interesting. Normally, when we do create a new committee or a new commission, like the Commission on People with Disabilities, that is creating a new town ordinance, but because this is a task force that dissolves, this is the mental health task force, when it dissolves, it's gone. It's not written into our code and our charter. So I was incorrect to say that we're doing this because it's creating an ordinance. It's either more, two options. One is strike the sentence from the minutes, or two is reflect that the, the reason we did the public hearing was because it was an important topic. We had, we wanted to hear from the public about the creation of this, of this task force, but it wasn't mandated by our code and charter. So however the council feels more comfortable, I, I would say if it's okay with you all, striking that sentence would be fine.
All right, Steve Jones, I'd like to do just a quick straw poll among councillors if they are okay with town manager Rosen's recommendation just to strike his first sentence from the minutes to reflect the correction that he has outlined. So I'll just go down the line. Councillor Regan, are you okay with that change of just striking that first sentence?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Forsythe, are you okay with that as well?
Yes.
Councillor Schenner.
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Councillor Luba.
No objection, yes.
Councillor Felusi.
I'm fine.
And I am also fine with that, Mike, so we can amend that agenda to strike that first sentence from the record as a correction, as you outlined in tonight's meeting. So that being said, I would look for a motion from a councillor to approve the minutes as amended.
Brenda Felusi, so moved.
John Regan, second. Beat you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, councillor Regan.
Aye.
Councillor Forsythe.
Aye.
Councillor Schenner.
Aye.
Councillor Luba.
Aye.
Councillor Felusi.
Aye.
And Steve Jones, I am also an aye, so that passes unanimously. I'll move right on along to item number twelve, correspondence to the council.
Brenda Felusi, there was no correspondence to the entire town council of any note.
Okay. All right, we'll move right on. Chairperson's report. The chairperson is not here tonight. The only thing I'll just add for myself as vice chair is I, I did attend the Library Foundation meeting. I forgot to include that in the reports from boards and commissions. They did approve funding for internet hotspots that residents will be able to rent out at the start of next year for those that are seniors or are economically challenged. They can rent these out for a period of time. The policy's being hammered out, but there'll be two of those available to be connected in a family or residence home. And then they could rent it. And I think it supports up to, I think, ten or fifteen devices, depending on the situation. But that was approved by the foundation to support the library as well as a brain HQ kind of mental exercise program for a year. Just, again, another digital service to help people that may not be going to the library to utilize that. And they are moving forward with their Talon oral history. They have a prospectus that they kind of laid out of the process and they'll be beginning the process of grant writing and getting some of the bones set up for that. So that would be my only addition to that. Otherwise, communications and petitions from councilpersons in item fourteen. If any councillor has an item that they'd like to raise, please raise your blue hand. Otherwise, all right, councillor Felusi.
Hi, yes, this is Brenda Felusi. So last meeting, I had mentioned that there was a couple of things that we needed to move on if we wanted to get points for sustainable CT. And I did not get verification that these items wouldn't be changed until today. So something that we need to do that we had approved last term was to establish a poet laureate ordinance. We had created a subgroup task force, I'm not sure what we called it, to take a look at creating a poet laureate ordinance of three town council members. We don't have to go that route. We can, whatever route we want to do as a town council is fine by me. But we never did undo that group. So I don't know what the proper procedures are from here if we've created a task force and then didn't dissolve it. The other thing is to establish and designate in arts and culture liaison for the town or an artist and residents. Again, something else that would get us some points, getting toward bronze. And the last item for sustainable CT was to list all of our communications, you know, basically take a communication inventory. How do we communicate with the, with our residents? How do we communicate with the public? Doesn't necessarily have to be residents. It could be how we communicate as a town. And I already have an inventory of what's online, but I don't have an inventory of what, like maybe listservs or other things we may have. And then we also need a communication strategy. And I don't know if that's something that the town manager creates, if the town council creates, or if we already have one in existence. So I saw Mike writing furiously. Did you need anything else?
No, I, I did write down what you said, and I don't think we have something called communication strategies. I think we would need to understand what that means, but we can certainly follow up. It's also just worth noting, too, that there, after the new calendar year, twenty twenty-one, is when the extended look back period goes into effect from sustainable CT. So it may not be possible for us to get bronze status this calendar year, but I think we've got a good shot for the next calendar year.
Right, and these are the things that we need to set up and have ready for next year. And I know. And I know we have so much on our plate that I want to make sure that we're, we, we make time for it. Um, because even if we do create the, the ordinance, you know, right after January, um, we still need to go through the process of finding a poet laureate or an artist in residence. So that would take time and we wouldn't get the points until those are established. So um, and I know, like you said, there is a look back period. Um, it, those things, uh, many of those things probably aren't something that comes up in front of the town council, but these three things I thought were items that the town council needs to um, you know, make movement on uh, or agree to move forward with. So that's why I brought them up. So, um, and I think that was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Flucy. Looks like up next, Counselor Shannon, you are being recognized.
Uh, thank you, Steve. Um, just a real quick point with the uh, elections now, or fortunately, um, uh, hopefully we can go forward with our newly elected officials and re-elected people, I think we have some good people in there. And uh, help use it, work together as a town council to uh, help uh, advocate for us on a uh, statewide level. So I think uh, I'm hoping, excited for going forward and hopefully we as a council can work together to uh, continue advocating for talent on a, uh, at the state level. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Counselor Luba?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, very much, Councilman Jones. Uh, that um, as, although we did cover it earlier through the uh, proclamation that was coming back to town, uh, given that this is the eve of Veterans Day, uh, I would like to personally uh, extend my uh, my thanks as a veteran to all of my fellow veterans, uh, to everybody that has uh, been out there. Um, that uh, that has worn the uniform and put their uh, put their, their concern for our country and for others ahead of their own concern. Uh, to my brothers and sisters in arms, I appreciate everything that you have done, uh, keeping this country safe and uh, and fighting to protect the freedoms and the opportunities that our great country provides for all, everyone. So thank you very much, uh, and I truly appreciate it. And I appreciate this uh, this council going forward, the proclamation uh, earlier in, earlier in the meeting. Um, that hopefully this will be something that we, we will be able to do uh, every year to recognize the newest members uh, of uh, the veteran community that have moved to um, or have returned to the town of Taland. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. And then just for myself, I did want to ask uh, Town Manager Rosen if, how far along are we on the process of the um, that OWL tech, the, the camera that was being proposed for purchase and testing?
Um, yes, thank you for mentioning that. Um, that is being delivered next week. So we, it, it was that long of a, a lead time from when we last talked about it. Um, you know, when we talked about it, whether we want to engage with hybrid meetings. So it's going to be delivered next week, but also consider all, all, all the uptick that has happened since we last had that conversation. So um, just put that out there.
Definitely. And actually, that leads into my second question. I was just curious if there's any um, direct impact on, I think it was Executive Order nine L in regards to the extension of agency municipal orders for concurrent duration of the public health and civil precarious emergency. If that changes anything on our end, or if um, prior documentation, I think, was signed by uh, Chairman Nuccio kind of covers our basis with that.
Uh, it's a good question. Um, I think what we sort of informally agreed at that meeting was that we would table this until the new calendar year and see where, where the world's at at that point. Maybe if any, i- if anything, this may have um, moved that uh, post to February rather than January, just based on the, the extension of the executive order to mid-February, or I forget exactly which date, but uh, that might be the, the next date where we might want to reconsider going back to a hybrid or in-person um, public meetings. But that's up to, uh, council can raise that when it feels comfortable to do so.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And it looks like Brenda, is your hand raised again?
Yes, sorry about that. Um, I, I've received notification that I did miss a, a communication to the town council. Um, there was one about the elections um, that one of our residents sent in. And this is not the first time I've missed an email from this resident. Um, I guess I need to figure out how to ensure that I'm receiving emails. Um, but I, I guess there was some concerns about the long lines and um, about having um, um, enough parking in locations for polling, especially during a presidential year. Um, so I will review that email for the next meeting, just so that you know it's gonna come in out of order. Was there, anybody else had another email that came to the town council that I may have missed?
Um, let me double check. I think there actually may have been one um, from a resident last Friday about holding up, a request for possibly holding a special meeting for the new BOE members. Obviously, we've kind of passed it at that point, but I think that was submitted to the entire town council.
Then, Mike, we need to figure out about getting my email reset again.
Um, sure, I'll send an email to IT Department. Um, if you're, do you, do you, we can talk offline, Brenda, but um, I'll let them know that you're, you need to reset that.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, if there are no other communications and petitions from council members, oh, Counselor Luba? Oh, okay, you're good. You're muted by, I see the hand gesture as a, you're all good. All right, so in that case, we'll move to item fifteen, public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. Again, if you would like to speak, please raise your blue hand, which is on the Zoom software. Otherwise, if you are calling in from a cellular device or a phone, hit star nine to be recognized. All right, Colleen, you to check. You are being recognized. Be sure to include your name and your address before you begin.
Good evening, Dylan Talan. Just wanted to kind of repeat what Brenda and Steve said earlier. Karen and Kate, I started with them for several years. They are pillars of our community. Kate with twenty years of educational background and just uh, everything that Karen knows around town and her involvement in schools has got me sorely messed. Um, I am excited for Madhu. And Sophia, I think they will be, have big shoes to fill, but I think they'll be able to fill them. Um, so I just wish them luck. And Steve, you're running a great meeting. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And, and obviously, it was, it was a pretty light meeting, so a good, a good test run for, for covering Counselor, Chairman Nuccio when she's out. But obviously, getting done within an hour, I think, makes our town staff pretty happy as well. They can rest easy tonight going into the dark winter, but thank you. So if there's any other comments or any other public participation? Give another moment. All right, we will be skipping item sixteen, that was canceled the executive session. So going right to seventeen, I would entertain a motion for adjournment at seven fifty-seven PM.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, we have a hand raised.
Oh, sorry about that, that just got raised. Um, yeah, we'll recognize that Dana Philbin for item fifteen for predation.
My apologies for the delayed blue hand. Steve, technology is not always my forte.
No worries.
Um, I just wanted to, to thank the council um, for uh, having us on your agenda this evening, um, for our newest uh, board members. Um, Sophia and Madhu, uh, I appreciate you processing that this evening and look forward to them joining the council or the Board of Education. Um, I also want to thank Karen, Marianne, and uh, Kate Hardbender for their continued dedicated service to the town of Taland in whatever capacity that might be. Um, but again, I just wanted to thank everybody as the lone Board of Ed member on the meeting this evening. I just wanted to show them my support and thank them. And again, I want to thank the town council, Steve Jones and Brenda Flucy for your kind words uh, of uh, Karen Moran and Kate Hardbender, as well as your kind words for Madhu Reduncitala and Sophia Shake. I think they'll be a great addition to the team, and we look forward to getting to work. So thank you very much. And have a wonderful Veterans Day. And um, Lou, I thank you for your speech on Veterans Day, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, Dana. And actually, that does raise a quick question before we move on. Um, Mike, do, because the town offices are closed tomorrow, Madhu and Sophia can't be sworn in until Thursday at the earliest, is that correct?
Correct, Steve, yes.
Okay. All right, so let's go back to item number seventeen. If anyone would like to entertain the motion to adjourn at seven fifty-nine PM.
This is Brenda Flucy, so moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second, Cassandra Forsyth.
All right, roll call vote. Counselor Reagan?
Aye.
Counselor Forsyth?
Aye.
Counselor Shannon?
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye.
Counselor Flucy?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming out tonight on Zoom and have a great evening. Stay safe, stay well. See you soon.